I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners, and invite all that care to join, to stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to note that all commissioners are in attendance with the exception of Commissioner Studley. And for the agenda, we have a couple changes in that we need to, under five, we need to remove B, the Tapestry Epic Update, and move that to a future agenda, a scheduling conflict. And also, under Communications, we are in receipt of a letter from the superintendent. That will be there. And also, we have, under our bids in the Consent Agenda, at everyone's desk is the walk-in cooler for Stafford. So we'd like to add that as number three, number two, E3, under the Consent Agenda. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the changes.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so the motion carries. So then, next up, we have our Consent Agenda. It is the Meeting Minutes, Personnel Memo, Engagement of Public Auditor, First Reading of Two Policies, Order of Business, and Evaluation of Superintendent, and then bids for wood pellets, passenger vans, and the walk-in cooler. So I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have a question regarding the vans, if I may. G Stone Motors, Formula Ford, one was unable to bid, one declined to bid, and I'd like to know what those mean. These are Ford Transit vans. These are things that both of those organizations should sell, and instead, we're buying them out of, out of Biddeford, Massachusetts.
Okay, I think we have some answers back there, if you want to come up.
Your questions are answered in three words: supply chain disruptions.
Okay.
And we were equally surprised, given the standard nature of these vans. However, they don't like to bid unless they either have the chassis in stock or available. And because of uncertainty for timing with which that material and the components can be delivered, some declined to bid.
Okay.
Do you have any other insight?
Yeah, I think just to address the specific wording is, when someone declined, they reached out and said, "Thanks, but no thanks." The unable to bid was, hey, we don't actually carry that model that was specified in the RFP. So those were the two, the differentiation in the wording.
All right. So it's, one is the dealer does not carry a model, so they probably would have difficulty getting something that they don't normally carry.
Right.
And then the rest of it is due to supply chain problems, which obviously DATCO is not having a problem with at this point in time, because they did bid. Do they have the chassis in stock such that we'll be able to accept?
They don't have them in stock, but they are taking orders from manufacturer.
So this could be a long-term.
It could, I think, six to eight months is what I remember.
So one of these two organizations, it's just troublesome to me that we don't have a local, you know, company bidding on this.
Yeah.
And so what you're telling me is that one of these two perhaps could have stood up and said, "Let's go for it. It's our school."
Yeah.
But they didn't. Thank you.
But again, I think, I think there's a responsibility that vendors feel, like if we are going to represent, if we're going to provide the product
Sure.
at a certain time.
Sure.
Unless they're confident they can do so. And sometimes, not so much with the vans, but I know with other types of materials and services that we're trying to get, a lot of times, certain vendors have things on order, just in the base case, and so they've got the flow, and they know that it's coming. But it is, it is troublesome, I agree.
I'm supporting this, that's, that's not the issue. I just, I'm bothered by the fact that we've got two Ford dealers within a 25-mile radius of where we're sitting right now, and neither of them bid.
Well, the only one thing I can say to you is, within the business office in general, we believe very strongly in the importance of community sourcing.
Sure.
And so we are always saying, and Glenn and I work together pretty closely on this, to say whenever we can bid locally, we try and do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, excellent. So I believe we have a motion on the floor to approve the Consent Agenda. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen, any opposed? Okay, so Consent Agenda carries, thank you. And then, next up, we have Communications. So we do not have anyone that signed up for public input. And do I see Kim Peters out there? Oh, there you are. So Kim Peters is our superintendent of Parks and Rec, and she's come to update us with some information.
Hello? That was fast. I told him, I was like, "Oh, no." Okay, so I know most of you, but, but some of you I don't, and just wanted to kind of give an update on the partnership that the REC has with the school district. So our youth sports is done directly through recreation, our Rutland Recreation Department, even included in the 7th, 8th grade football team. We run that, that program as well. And I just want to give an update on our numbers and what we're doing, and kind of how it works. Currently, we're in the fall season. We have soccer, football, archery, and field hockey. And we do a Go Play Series for kids that maybe don't know exactly what sport they want to do, but they want to participate in some way. I would say our numbers are good. They're definitely getting higher. We have just about 200 kids playing football. Over just about 40 teams throughout the Rutland County area. We become the hub for, like Rutland Town, Wallingford, Mill River, Proctor. We host all the teams at our fields. We have a coach over here. So it's good. We're doing, it's, it's really fun to be back from COVID and to see the numbers and the youth really engaging. The way it works, if, if a town offers a sport, then we encourage that child to play for that school or that town. If that school or town doesn't offer a sport, then, then we take them on. Like, for example, wrestling, or a swim team, archery, theater. We have a production coming up, Annie Junior, in the beginning of December. So anytime a school or town cannot host, then we welcome anyone into our programs. So our goal this year, as the REC department, is to really get out into the schools and get these kids involved. We, I work very closely with the principals. They are great with response, and I mean really good, with getting, when we send them a newsletter, getting it out to our parents. The worst thing is, is having a child come three weeks after the season has started, and, you know, we say, "We've started, we've moved, we're moving, but here's what we have in the winter." So right now, one of the things I wanted to just talk about was our winter offerings. Right now, we're signing up for basketball, ice skating, wrestling, Go Play Series. So those are our four big things that we're signing up for, and we expect big numbers again. So those, those registrations will go up for a month. I also offer a babysitting course, which I actually did yesterday. It's a very popular course. The hospital used to offer it, they don't offer it right now, so I'm one of the only certified instructors. When I put it out there, we fill up, and we fill up quick. So yesterday, I held one, 30, 30 kids from around this area came. So I'll have one in the next couple of weeks. Last thing I just want to mention is, the partnership that the REC has with the school district is very strong. And a couple programs I just wanted to mention that have really impacted us as a REC department, but I think also the students, is the PLACE program that is with, with Jennifer McNeil, who's taken over that program. We've done the PLACE program. What that is, is an intern from the high school that, that comes in interns throughout Rutland, and we've had them, and it's just such a great eye-opener for the kids to see that we don't just do sports. It's a very big organization that we run. And if, even if someone's like looking at the business side, we get to show them the business side, how we do budget. We're in budget season right now, so our two students are getting a lot of information on that. Also, we, we help with the School-to-Work program. Now that we have the Community Center, that's continually used by all the schools within the, the area, including the RMS Bridges Program, and also our connection with the YES program. At the end of the year, we, I do the lifeguarding class, which is huge, because then the kids, high school kids get to work for their REC, either lifeguarding, counseling. Currently, we have quite a bit reffing games, so be kind to them if you're coaching. They are learning. So that's really it. Any questions that you guys might have? I was, one of my program directors, Joe Bonisara, not to get mixed up with the middle school teacher, but his son works as a program director now, but he ended up getting called to ref the high school game. So he got pulled to go do the boys' game tonight, so. But I'm open to any questions or anything. Perfect.
Just a quick comment, if I may.
Yes, Peter.
Your programming there at the REC is just outstanding.
Thank you.
You really offer opportunities for kids that they would otherwise not have the opportunity to enjoy. So on behalf of all kids, mine, mine, they're a bit taller than, and with deeper voice than they used to,
Sure.
but, you know, it was all fun.
Yep.
And it really gave them a reason to get out there and enjoy themselves, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Playing off of what Peter said, also, my kids, we moved back here from Ohio, and my son was playing football for a lot of years, because that's a lot Ohio thing.
Yeah.
And when we came back here and found the REC had a football program, he was so happy, and it really kept him busy. And then the drama, my kid, my other kid was in the drama for a long time, so.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a really great programs, yeah.
Right. Part about allowing everyone, we also have scholarships too, so if we, we do not turn away any child. If, if somebody needs to do something, we make sure that, that that happens, and that specifically for city, city residents, that they can receive scholarships. What they use a lot in the summer for our summer programs.
Well, I would just, the numbers for the basketball program, I would imagine, are pretty substantial. Do you use all the schools, or how does?
Oh, that's a great, great question. So, you know, before we had the Community Center, we used to use Keith, our, the, the middle school gym, not Keith, the other one. But with the Community Center, we're able to host. However, I'm predicting that our numbers are going to be high. I've actually reached out to one of the principals at Northwest, just in case we need overflow. But last year, we, we were able to host our wrestling program and our youth, including all the games on Saturdays. But I'm a little bit, being as proactive as we can, start reaching out to Northwest and see if we could utilize their gym, and we're open, they're open to that, so, good question.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So then, just in, under Communications, the board is in receipt of a letter from Superintendent Olson of his intent to seek contract renewal. The process is, as we're shifting dates now, he needed to have the letter to us by March. His contract expires in June, so he has given us that letter now. So that will be coming forth with discussions and evaluation and planning. That is on record and filed. Okay, and any questions on that? Or you can send it around, it just came yesterday, so it's not in your pocket. And so now we are on to school program updates and student representative.
All right, so state Stafford Health Career students recently sat for their state licensing exam for the licensed nursing assistant certification certification. We are happy to report that we had a 100% pass rate on the written exam and an 88% pass rate on the practical exam. All students at Stafford just wrapped up the required federal ACT work piece testing in the areas of English Language Arts, Math, and Rapid Literacy. Students earn scores between 3 to 7 on these assessments, and the goal for all the month CTE students is a minimum of 5 to be considered proficient. Students scoring a 5 or higher on all three assessments are also eligible for the National Career Readiness Certification and college credits from CCV and a variety of other college qualifications. Rutland Middle School had student-like conferences last week, and they were a huge hit. Our students presented a slideshow to their parents with data pictures and work samples. Hickory 7th graders are integrating chicken eggs to learn about cells, growth, and development. They have been particularly interested in this project and have learned in class how to handle the egg store and check the embryo development. All of our students recently took a Severs Social Academic and Social Emotional Behavior Risk Screener. This is a brief norm reference tool for screening all students to identify those who are at risk for social emotional behavioral problems. We will use this information to ensure we are providing tiered support for all of our students' needs. Allen Street campus practice school family barbecue was a huge success and very well attended. Families have the opportunity to connect, play, and enjoy a perfect evening together. Last week, students had the opportunity to present to a group of local professionals and successfully secure an $18,275 grant to provide equitable access on purpose. Be all the lookout for new additions to practice. RHS was pleased to hold parent-teacher conferences last week. Parents will visit me with their teachers online, by phone, or in person. After the final tally, we realized a 20% increase in the number of conferences held this year. Thank you to all those parents who participated. RHS will host Granny Sanders tomorrow for a student assembly and phone call meeting. Senator Sanders will be available to answer student questions and open topics.
Thank you, Holden. All right, then we are on to central office reports. And first up is the superintendent's report.
Holden Stoll.
All right.
That's terrific with the increase in the parent conferences.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll start there. I wanted to mention that we have parent conferences Thursday night and Friday. Families for participation. We all know how important it is to have families involved, student safety. We're all aiming for the same goals, so we had a round of discussion rates from last year. I look, Holden, I look back 10 years ago to see what RHS had for numbers. This year, it can be. So thanks to the families and friends involved, we're all just going to go. I was, was going to start with the Portrait of the Graduate Initiative. I think we all know about this, but I just want to make sure people understand it, the community. So we are entering this process called Portrait of the Graduate, which starts next week. We, it's a reflective process that allows us to really adhere as a school community on a collective vision and what we aspire for with our students, what we're aiming for at the end of 13 years. There's three main steps to this. We're going to consider, articulate what our aspirations for our students are. We're going to make sure we understand what the skills and mindsets are that are needed for the 21st century as students leave high school eventually, move on to working world, what they need to be successful. And then, if we have to do something in terms of redesign of different aspects of what we offer to the schools, we need to consider that. What do students need after they're done, what do we achieve differently? That's the school system. So we hope in the end, we will have good clarity and a collective vision out of this with our community. We want to make sure that the community is engaged, and we want to make sure that we are adjusting anything that we're doing with students to make sure they're using those expectations. It starts next week, next Thursday. We are leaving the design team, it's a group of parents, staff members, community members, students and board members, that we will do together. We'll consider, first off, the expectations for young people when they leave the school system. What do they have to do as, as future employees, or future adults, future citizens? And then, we'll take that information and say, if the next step is, then we're going to build our portrait of graduate based on that. So that's next week's meeting. We'll meet again in November as well, December, and January for the community. You're all invited. Oh, Maspat, I wanted to.
Bill, before you get off the Portrait of a Graduate, how many, how many community folks were invited?
Ted and Ally have been working on that. I want to say Ted, there were about 150, 200 people on that list, somewhere around there. Who said it includes many different constituent groups, students, even alumni, civic leaders, people from, you know, business leaders, business leaders, and of course, all constituents and stakeholders within the school. We're going to be following after talks in the next couple of days if we have any. Trying to encourage the maximum possible participation. Hopefully, then, gives us a very inclusive and update.
Good, thank you.
Just updating, updating you on Maspat progress. We charged the high school with, you know, a proposal for either a name of consideration for him or our peers, and that process has started. The high school offered an opportunity for school community members and for the public to nominate ideas for names, for monitors for the Maspat. That process closed just recently, and now the high school administration and the student senate are working together to look through all those names, condense it down a bit, look for likenings that might fit together well, and make sure that the names are appropriate and within the law that was passed last summer. So that, I think, should be done by the next board. We, we're thinking, we'll be, opportunity for students to vote on the name, the proposal, and we'll support, sorry, submit that result to the board. The teacher conferences we talked about, and I think you also mentioned Senator Sanders coming in. I was going to, I was going to add as well. I just want to thank our fellow legislators, come to discuss quite a bit. Senator Sanders has been there, I think, for years that I've been there, almost every, every other year or so. And they're very generous with their time. If they have an opportunity for, I think, seniors tomorrow, to be able to have a Q and A with them and, you know, discuss the topics of the day. He is very interesting to listen to, the kids, he challenges them, but thank them all. So it's, it'd be a good experience for them. He's very generous with his time. Certainly, he's been there, so we thank him. So that's it for me.
All right, next up, then, is back to you for the enrollment process.
Holden, do you have anything on that?
I can give you papers, I bet you can whip it out and steal his thunder.
So we have this, this that we give you every year. I'm not going to go through it line by line, but just, just in general, overview. When we were trying to create our budget, as Tim just said, this is the season, and this is kind of the, to start off for this, we're looking at school numbers, enrollment numbers. And maybe you should go to page five. That gives you the easiest way to kind of see how things have shaped up over the past. This is, we're almost up to 30 years now with this. So we're discussing enrollment numbers to be created by the community. And if you look at page five, but enrollment, past enrollment from 1995, '06 all the way till current day, our high water mark was, I think, 2000, 2001, where our enrollment in the district was 2,900 students just to date. So since then, especially over the last 12 years or so, we've seen decline in enrollment numbers in the district, about 2% a year averaging. And that's a statewide issue. Everywhere in the state, enrollments have dropped, separated from counties. I think I mentioned, maybe a couple of years ago, there was a state study that showed from '96, 2006, the state system lost about 1,000 students. Then from '06 to '16, we lost another 3,000 students. And so the projection was that by 2026, the number of students in the state was following the 1/7. I don't know if the, but with the pandemic, it's changed a lot. It's not unusual that we're, we've lost students. In our county, population has decreased, so student numbers have increased. So we consider that, because we, we try to make sure that our staffing matches the enrollment. So the last couple of years, you've seen us consider what we need for our staffing. I, we've turned back to page two and three, and you can see this RIS, RMS, or RAS request. Generally, over the past number of years, RIS has been around 500 students, just slightly under that. RMS has been around 250 students in recent years, or it used to be around 200 students. RAS is around 1,000, around 60, something like that. And RHS, it's been, it's been steady around 800 this year, or 7, 60, something like that. Exactly, around the 760s. And we see some factors affecting that, especially, one of the factors that affected RHS this year was opportunity for seniors to go, follow the one-year-old, or many of them are going to go to calc. And so we have 21 students that are taking the initiative. That's a big chunk of students out of senior class. But that's, that's a hit on enrollment for the RHS. So when they, when they do that with calc, and we, we take them out of the, then they come back with us. And so those, those numbers have been around that, those numbers, around that range for the last few years. But I think I've got to tread into Ted's territory a little bit.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
So even though enrollment is down, with the volume of things that you're having to teach kids now, and the various programs, that does not necessarily equate to saving money or being able to eliminate positions, would it?
Yeah, Karen, I think that's an excellent point, actually. So like, what the schools have to provide for kids.
Exactly.
Either content or services, right? So we're, schools are expected to do a lot.
A lot more than they ever used to.
A lot more than they used to. And needs are significant. So we're, schools are doing a lot for, for communities, maybe 30 or 40 years, but those things won't do a lot. So you have this kind of, it's almost like a contradiction. We might see enrollment coming down a little bit, but needs are significant for our expectations for what schools do this year. We're trying to match that. And then I'll throw in one more thing. Connect to the word, exactly what you said, but more current today. We had the pandemic happen, and so then there's some other serious needs that we're facing. So while we're considering, you see enrollment falling down, we made cuts over the past couple of years, reductions in staff. We also have hired staff through Esserfunds to support some of the, some of the pandemic needs. So it's not like this simple equation, it's kind of complicated. So I was going to steal a little bit of Ted's numbers on. You'll see, he's going to explain it, but FY21, we had a certain number of staff that went down the next year, and down again this year. But at the same time, we did hire recruits through Esserfunds to, to serve the needs that were generated out of the pandemic. Those staff, that, those hires, that, that money won't be there. So we're expecting that those jobs won't be there.
Just, just a question on that. When you say there was the decrease in staff, was that because of budget cuts, or was it because of the pandemic, or both?
Because of budget cuts, yeah.
Okay.
We were looking to make sure that, that our, our staff match this scenario in that time. You know, we, we see class size is getting to a certain point, you say, okay, maybe not using staff, staff as a department.
Right.
So we, we try to be on the Aprils of that. So I'm glad you brought that up, because it is complicated. This would be the next step, I think, Ted's.
I think it's, a lot of it's from the last finance and planning. I think all, I think all the different years, your slides were included, are there, Karen? I think all, I think all the different years, your slides were included, are there, Karen, and the staff changes in the last several years. Peter?
Thank you. So Bill, thank you for this. I have just one question, two parts. If you look at page four of the high school, um, I think you've answered half of this, but if you went from grade nine, um, actual twenty-one, twenty-two, to this year, twenty-two, twenty-three, actual, they would be grade ten, one hundred and thirty-six, you have a reduction of twenty-five kids, and I'm wondering why? And then the same question was grade eleven to grade twelve, but if there's a reduction of twenty, but if twenty-one kids are off to Castleton University or somewhere else such that we don't count them in our numbers, that explains that. But can you explain the loss of twenty-five students?
I I saw that here. I don't know why that is. I did look at um, we break down numbers for, how many city residents, residents we have? Students, sorry.
Yeah.
And how many, listening to this.
Right.
The tuition numbers didn't go down, so the city numbers did go, did go down, so and um, part of that, I'm sure, is due to early college, but I don't know why that.
That's a significant number in uh grade nine to grade ten.
Yeah.
So if you happen to find out, you know, if you'd let us all know.
Yeah. I'm gonna try to check with Carol about it, see if she has a sense of.
Thank you.
Bill, I had a question about um on page three. My 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 question basically has to do with, um, I'm looking at uh classroom sizes, like the number of students in a particular classroom. And um, I noticed there's a couple like where the, uh, I'm looking at first grade at northeast. The projected was that there would be five classrooms at fifteen students apiece, and we ended up with four classrooms at nineteen and a half students apiece. Is there a goal for classroom size? It's probably a range.
We're aiming for that range. Uh, we're also considering student base. I was trying to balance those.
Yeah.
And if you look at, I guess.
I was looking at that particular group because the numbers actually went up, and instead of having five classrooms, we had, we ended up with four. Is that a staffing issue or?
Yeah, well, they're trying to balance out the staffing based on what the student is at, and between the three three ways as well. But I I'm also looking at, we're looking at projected numbers for, I'm looking at kindergarten numbers.
Yeah.
He says seventy-six.
Yep.
The actual turned out to be sixty-six.
Right.
And so then the next year, we divided the next year with sixty-six. We're projecting that, we're just, we're just taking up the last year's number.
Right.
It's not really accurate.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sixty, you can see that at Castleton. But yeah, we're we're looking at needs for kids and trying to match up, match up staff regardless of our staff's.
And is there a, is there an ideal classroom size, or what are what are we shooting for in terms of?
I think it's our people.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're, you're looking at, we're, some of the numbers are just averaging generally across across the kindergarten, the second grade, it between kindergarten and early stages, averaging about sixteen kids a class.
Right.
And plus about thirteen kids in a class, and fourteen and and plus for grade nine, nineteen for grade, for these students. We're we're trying to get somewhere in that range.
Okay. All right, next up then is budget planning and timeline. So we have ten, CFO out there, do join us.
So I just have a couple of charts um to share briefly tonight in terms of an update on the budget. Um, the first chart shows you the actual timeline, and the key point there is there are no changes in these uh major deadlines from what we reviewed in the past. The only, the only addition is at the very bottom, we added that uh on your school board meeting of January tenth, that would be the the target for the school board to officially review the budget and hopefully to ratify it. But leading up to that, again, I'll just summarize briefly that uh we've begun work during September on our expense and our grant revenue budgets. Uh, the expectation is we will have completed an initial pass of both expense and revenue and staffing during the month of October, uh, at which point then, at the finance and planning committee's meeting on November first, our expectation is to share with that committee uh an initial consolidated view of what the the budget is looking like for fiscal twenty-four. We plan to use the month of November for analysis and update and review. Um, and the um, the various groups and and principals within the district are aware that we can make changes during November, especially as regards any guidance that we get from the committee or from the full board. Then come November thirtieth, we're going to ask to freeze all of those estimates so that come the December sixth and December thirteenth meetings of the finance and planning committee and the school board respectively, we can make a fairly tight proposal in terms of the recommended budget. The intent there, of course, is to give the school board uh time uh during December to look a little bit more closely at details of the budget and to think about it so that by the time we come back in January, um, it's fairly familiar and hopefully there'll be no surprises. And in the meantime, again, if we need to make any changes, that gives us time to do so. Over on the right-hand side of the page, I've made a couple of just inset notes for your reference. Big difference this year versus our previous couple of budget years is that we actually know what the salary percentage increases are going to be for ninety percent of the staff. Uh, the ten percent that we don't are the non-aligned staff that the the school board, for which the school board will approve a a salary increase uh come this spring. But obviously, we know the majority of of what that's going to be. So the salary uh budget is going to be a function of, a very close function of the staffing level. Um, later this week on Thursday evening, some of us will be meeting um with members of the municipal government to hear what the actuary has to say for the Rutland City Pension Program. The actuary is going to come in, give us the report in terms of where the status of the funding is. That, of course, has implications for pension contribution rates. So we'll get an idea uh come Thursday evening whether there's any need uh for those rates to change in the coming year. Um, and that's important, of course, because about ninety percent of all of our employees do participate in the city's pension. Um, and for that pension, the school district contributes generally about ten percent of each employee's salary. So for a teacher who might be making sixty thousand dollars, um, the district contributes six thousand dollars based upon the current rate. So we'll be watching if those change carefully. Um, by early November, we expect to have preliminary indication of what medical plan costs are likely to do in twenty-four versus uh this this coming year. Um, that, for fiscal twenty-three, the budget increase was five point two percent for medical plan costs, which was the first year in many that it wasn't double-digit. Um, so considering the the importance and the significance of medical plan costs for our budget, that'll be an important indicator. Therefore, by the time we come to you in early December, we'll have a pretty tight understanding of, you know, what those costs are likely to be. The last couple of years that I've been here, the preliminary estimates ended up being either spot-on or very close to the final number, so. Uh, and then the only other thing I've mentioned there is come December first, the Vermont Tax Department will issue a letter, which it does every year on December first, and they always hit that on schedule, and they'll give us some important parameters that um that end up driving uh tax rates and and other considerations in the overall budgetary process. Does anybody have any questions or comments as regards the timeline itself? Okay, then let's just look at the the second and last chart. This is um, this is a little bit of trend data on full-time employees. Um, Bill began to address some of this, so I'll I'll kind of pick up from from where he left off there. This particular chart shows you full-time employees excluding the S R funded positions. We've got about ten of them, I think, in the twenty-three budget. And the reason we exclude them is because this is something that's changed over time, and because they're federally funded, they don't impact uh either the local tax rate or they don't draw from our local funding. So this is sort of the the normal ongoing X X S R. And and you know, the importance there too, as you might recall, is um various rounds of S R funding uh end in September of twenty-three and in September of twenty-four, you know, unless that gets extended. So Bill alluded earlier to the fact that from the budget in twenty-one to the budget for twenty-two, uh, we reduced the number of full-time employees by about three and a half percent, or seventeen, we say FTEs for full-time employees. Uh, what's really interesting is that by December of twenty-twenty-one, our actual employees, when we looked at the payroll for December twenty-one, was down to four-seventy-nine. So the green bars are actual. Uh, the twenty-three budget, the year that we're currently in, included four hundred and eighty-nine full-time employees being funded. There's another ten S R on top of that. Um, and we took a look at our payroll run for the end of this past September, and we were at about four-seventy-seven, so a bit below um the full year budget on that count. Now, I I've got a little asterisk there, and you'll see on the right-hand side, that four-seventy-seven does include thirteen open para educator positions uh for which we're actively recruiting. We need those positions, but with the difficult and challenging labor market, they're not yet filled. The intent is to fill them, um, so I've included them in the four-seventy-seven to show you basically where we hope and need to be. You might also take a look at, you know, the fact that last year for fiscal twenty-two through that year end, we had fifty-four people uh leaving the district, twenty-five retirements, twenty-nine resignations. So when you think about fifty-four relative to these uh base employment numbers, you're looking at a turnover rate of more than ten percent, which is very significant for any organization. Um, and so uh when you folks were asking and thinking about gee, uh optimal classroom sizes relative to teachers and and Karen, your point about, well, we may be going, we may be seeing some lower enrollment, but that doesn't necessarily correlate to lower need for teachers. When I was listening to your questions and comments, Karen, I was thinking of a concept that I think about as teaching intensity, which is just something that is the way I think about it, because I believe, based upon what I see anecdotally, I don't have metrics to prove it, but I believe given the suite of services that are expected and needed today versus, say, twenty years ago, whether it be social services the school provides, or or more special education services or other targeted education, my my way of thinking is that the teaching intensity has actually increased, and so therefore, to your point, I wouldn't necessarily expect to see a one-for-one correlation. And I think that's really important. Very hard to measure, but that's in fact what you're paying Bill Olson, you know, Rob Bliss and other leaders in the administration for is where we don't have the metrics to show it, given their expertise and their insight, to make the judgments, to your point, Kevin, about, yeah, what will be the optimal class size? We had turnover of more than ten percent. How are we going to balance that in the best interest of the teachers who left, the skills that we have, and the teachers whom we can get? Um, so that's a, that's an important dynamic, and again, the the key in having leadership like you do is making sure that they can be the ones that that put together the right resources where they're going to serve the best purpose. But it, there's just as much art as there is to science there. Um, down the, down at the very bottom of the chart, below the graphs, I just put a couple of bullet points for your reference. So the the budget for this fiscal year twenty-three includes thirty-two million for all salaries. So I've shown you full-time employees, but when we include all salaries for part-time stipends, anything that we pay that's salary-related, that's thirty-two million dollars for this year, okay? You're you're well aware of the fact that benefits and salary are a very significant portion of our total budget. So we have contracted increases for teachers and for para educators agreed this year at three and a half percent, and they are, of course, the majority of our employees. So you can do the simple math easily as well. If you take about three percent and multiply by thirty million, you know, you realize that there's going to be a nine hundred thousand to a million dollars of increased costs built-in by contract at the current salary level. So you've heard me speak in the past about the fact that we have inflation headwinds, which, you know, we all realize every day. Um, we know going into this budget that there's going to be at least a million dollars of additional salary cost if we don't do anything differently. That's again, at the at the budgeted number of four hundred and eighty-nine FTEs, yes.
I just had a question going back to.
Yes, ma'am.
The turnover rate. I know this is nationwide, it's not just unique to Rutland, but do we have any idea why such a turnover in Rutland? I mean, is it, do we have any idea that it's?
Well, the the, I'm going to make one observation, and then I'm going to ask Bill to comment on it, okay, since he's the professional educator. But um, one thing that I'll say is I'm going to start with the twenty-five retirees. And you know, when we were going through the uh labor negotiations and the contract negotiations in the last year or two, we were looking very closely at what the demographics are, and you won't be surprised when I tell you that many of our teachers, if not most, are in the twenty-plus year range. The the great news is that means that all of our students benefit from all of their expertise. The not-so-great news is we have quite a large pool who are either retirement-eligible or becoming retirement-eligible. And I know that that demographic, that kind of profile, is not uncommon. Um, in terms of the resignations, I can't speak to that other than just the generic of a competitive job market. Um, and so with that, I'm going to ask Bill to bail me out.
Just one follow-up, as far as retirees, do you know, or is there a projection on the coming, the next school year?
That's a, that's a great question. So let me, let me break that down a little bit. So we know what the ages are of our employees, but that does not allow us necessarily to project the retirements.
Right.
That gives us retirement-eligible. But what you start to see is, you know, things go through cycles. Some people are looking forward to retirement, they can't wait to retire. Business environment changes, and then people decide, maybe I'm going to work a little longer, or maybe they decide this is a great place to work and I'm going to work a little longer. So that is really impossible to project. I will say that um the last couple of years, we have started to see an increase, like this past year of twenty-twenty-two, we saw retirement notices coming in earlier than they had in the past. I wouldn't be surprised if that trend continues, but again, it's, all we can do is look at the retirement-eligible population, since we don't know what people are going to do.
Let's just add two things, um, and and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think with the para educators, we're competing with the rest of the job market over. So there's opportunities that, because of the way the labor market is, that might not have been. With the teachers, I think I noticed last year, a lot of, there were openings all around the state.
Right.
It was, it was a big issue. Districts around the state were having trouble. The study that we were reporting, how many, how many openings we have across the state, that was, it was very, big data on that. But I, I think there was a lot of, I, I'm just, I'm just speaking anecdotally again. I knew a number of teachers who moved to different districts because it benefited their uh, their community, their family situation better. There were those opening, unless we brought in, in for one, but might have benefited a family situation that had been looking to go in that direction for a long time. Finally, there's an opportunity. Conversely, we had people coming to us for the, for the same reasons, so might have wanted to come to Rutland City, but they weren't, they weren't there. So we filled almost everything that we needed to fill, but there was just a lot of.
Shuffling seats.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing I'd like to add on that is, you know, every month, we have a uh, we have a full cabinet meeting with administrative, staff, principals, and the like. And and one of the things that caught my attention in the most recent meeting was several of the principals, when we were talking about the challenging of recruiting, because we brought in, over the summertime, we brought in about fifty or fifty-five people, you know, to match that. But there were a couple of principals who said very clearly that this is probably one of the best incoming classes of teachers, that. of the best incoming classes of teachers that they've had in quite some time, which, when you consider how competitive the marketplace is, that's pretty remarkable. And I think, you know, kudos to the team for bringing in quality, high-quality teachers. So it becomes an opportunity as well as a challenge.
It is true.
That's all I had on the budget.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
Thanks, Ted.
All right, and then next up, we have the Stafford Technical Center update with Melissa Connor and Bill Lucci.
So thank you very much. I'm joined by Bill Lucci, who's the Assistant Director of the Evening Division at Stafford. So next month, we're going to be presenting to you our FY '24 budget, so we thought we would just give you some highlights, so we don't inundate you with information next month. So just, we've just started the budget process. We have our first meeting with the regional superintendents tomorrow, where they will kind of set our charge as to what would be considered an allowable tuition rate, and then we'll really begin the work. What we're seeing, our instructors have already turned in their budgets for next year, and we're seeing across the board huge increases in supplies, ranging from 30% to 50% increases. You know, this year, we had budgeted, you know, different steel for our welding program, and we're seeing a 50% increase. So we're kind of struggling to figure out how to fix that this year. But we anticipate that that will go into next year. And as I mentioned, with the school vans, you know, supply is an issue. And so as much as possible, we're trying to pre-purchase this year in anticipation that it may be challenging for next year as well. We are going to be looking to continue expanding some of our programs. Our engineering program, for instance, has always been operated with two instructors since its inception. For the last year and a half, we've been operating with one instructor due to our variety of reasons. And one of the things, our goal is to bring that back to a full two-instructor program. That's how the curriculum is designed. Dan Ehrensmeyer's been doing a phenomenal job of balancing teaching two curriculums at the same time to two different populations. And so we're hoping to increase that. The numbers are showing our current Level One students, they're all anticipating coming back, choosing not to do early college because of the college credits that are being offered by the program. So that's a great, a great thing. Our health careers program, we added a second instructor this year. We're just getting ready to start our recruiting for next year. That kicks off in force in another week or so. And so we'll be able to recruit fully for that program, so we'll be able to double the capacity of that program. So that will be helping with that program as well. Our new health careers instructor, Courtney Dumas, is doing a great job. She's already brought on board some college courses that the students will be able to, again, we're trying to compete with that early college, because we lose a lot of kids to that early college, and also looking to bring on additional certifications, including the EMT certification for students, because there is a huge need for that in the region. We're going to continue our search for an electrical instructor that we've been trying for two years to do. And again, our biggest challenge there is that somebody coming from industry to come into education is taking anywhere from a $30,000 to $40,000 a year pay cut. So that is a wall that we're facing, but we're hoping we can find the right person. So again, we can double the capacity of that program. We have about 21 students still on a waitlist, so we're hoping to be able to up that program. Some exciting things is we are starting to explore the addition of a pre-tech exploratory program that's geared towards ninth and 10th graders. So it would be a program offered at Stafford where students were looking at various models around the state right now. The students would be able to come there as a ninth and/or 10th grader and actually have a program. It would be probably a half-day program, and they would be able to explore the different career paths that are available through programs, so that when they finish ninth or 10th grade, they'd be able to make a more purposeful decision about the career pathway, whether it's at Stafford or something else. But it's really modeled on a problem-based, project-based learning model, so the students are actually connecting their academics to their instructor, the instruction around the program area. So that's exciting, with a hope of possibly offering that in the '24, '25 school year. So we're doing a study around that this year. And then finally, for the day program, before I turn it over to Mr. Lucci, we did a strategic plan a couple of years ago, and we had our Niastecennial visit. And the biggest thing that came out of that was that we needed to look at our scheduling. So we are in the process of starting a study to look at different scheduling models that will hopefully, fingers crossed, align our start and stop times. Right now, we have three, actually four different arrival times, three different departure times, which is making it so that all students are not having the same opportunities as others at Stafford. So we're trying to kind of streamline that, also looking at flexibility in schedules and different creative schedules and different creative ways of offering academics, so that we can meet a more diverse need of our students and making sure that they're getting all the SEL needs that they have met as well. So lots of change on the horizon, but next month, we'll be presenting the budget and then hoping for approval at the December meeting. So adult education, Bill oversees that. That is part of our budget. Their budget is built on a break-even, meaning that whatever we are bringing in for income covers the expenses. We always hope for a little bit more income, because that goes into our reserve fund, which helps support building improvements and equipment purchases. Obviously, in tight budget years, we look for things like that. When there's shared spaces between day and evening programs, how can increased revenues perhaps help support the purchase of additional welders, because we have a full-time welding program? So we look at creative ways of doing that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lucci, and he can give you the highlights of the evening programs.
Thank you. So if you drive around town, you see sandwich boards in front of places that are Panera and Maxi's and all the other places, because everyone's looking for people to work. So we partner with a great number of people in the community, sort of piggybacking on what Kim Peters was talking about, the partnerships that she's been able to develop. That's sort of our bread and butter in the evening division. And I'm just going to go down the list of partners that we have, what they do for us and the programs that they make viable to help make, and help meet those staffing needs that exist in virtually every sector, not just in Rutland, but, you know, throughout the country, really. We'll start off with the obvious one. If you've seen that styling new truck driving around town, it says workforce development on it. That is, Casella didn't buy that for us. State of Vermont, Agency of Education and Department of Labor helped pay for that new trailer, that 48-foot trailer with that really nice workforce development design on the side, that came to us because of our partnership with Awesome Graphics and Tammy Napolitano, helped us design that and get that on the road to meet the condition of the grant that helped fund that, that we were going to help promote workforce development. It's kind of nice that we don't have billboards in Vermont, but if you put wheels on them, they're not billboards anymore, are they? And we were able to sort of do that as a workaround. GE Aerospace is one of our partners. They're wonderful to us and for us. We help manage their toolmaker apprenticeship program. We've been doing that for 20 years to keep that plant, and it's 1,200 to 1,500 full-time employees right here in Rutland and not going anyplace else. And it's a really good relationship that we have, providing them classroom space and some administrative support. Obviously, Casella Way Systems, that, the classroom that, if anyone ever wanted to come up and see our old classroom that we were leasing up at the Vermont Wood Plant, our teachers thought that they died and gone to trucker heaven when they, when John Casella retrofitted a space in West Rutland, and it's just an amazing classroom and driving range space. They were co-located down there, and we tweaked our federally-approved curriculum to meet Casella's needs to train, to fast-track people, to get licenses for their CDLB program, because John's in this expansion mode. So we're co-located down in West Rutland. A good thing about it is that we've found, from Judy Fraser, who's the HR director for the city of Rutland, she needs plow drivers and needed them to be CDLB-certified yesterday, because it's supposed to snow Friday. So we, through John Casella's program that we tweaked for him, we're putting two current Rutland City employees, fast-tracking them through the Casella side of the house to earn their CDLB, so they'll be ready to plow on Friday. West Rutland heard that we were doing that, and we've enrolled one West Rutland municipal employee in the same program for the month of November. Good luck trying to drive in West Rutland in November when it's snowing and they don't have anybody to plow the roads, go in the back way. Other programs that we do, we have a very, very vigorous after-school welding program that Melissa talked about, that we're doing. We've bundled four classes together from the Intro to Welding Processes class, and on the tail end, the fourth class is Advanced Welding Processes, leading to a certification with the American Welding Society, which is what everyone wants, you know, a credential that means something to potential employers. The Milrite Local Union Number 1163 in Albany, New York, found out that we were doing this, and a gentleman who's in charge of the local, we're going to give him office space, I think, in our, he's constantly coming down for the day program with Tony Bosnic and the evening program, looking for Milrites that are coming out of our program, right out of Albany, New York. We've got a Medication Nurse Assistant Program, there's only two in the state, and we've got one of them. It's a great program. It's a credential up from the Licensed Nurse Assistant, where they're able to dispense medications in a long-term care facility. And we have one of the two programs in the state. And the most recent class we did was a max of 14, and we had Cedar Hill Nursing Home come down and take the class. They're located just outside, I think they're in Bethel. Gifford Hospital sent down some people to take the class here in Rutland, and both Genesis facilities did it to make up that cohort of 14 people. So we actually provided a course that can't be gotten, they didn't want to drive to Newport, so they came down here to Rutland to take that class for us. We have a phlebotomy class with our partner, the American Red Cross, because they're in such a dire need of phlebotomists in, at hospitals and clinics all over the place. We have an aesthetics program. Maybe you can't tell, but I had a really nice facial last week up in the woods. My wife said, she goes, I can't tell the difference, but it felt good. And we have 12 people in our aesthetics program. Our sponsors and working up there, we have a wonderful classroom facility at the Woods at Killington, and we're doing our program up there, and they'll be done the end of November and going for their licensing exam. We've got the only adult education cosmetology program in the state, operated through Career Center at night. We've got 12 people in that program, and it's run by Michelle Dagel, who owns and operates the Cutting Edge Salon locally. Wonderful first-time teacher, and she's doing an awesome job with that program. Welding program, our LNA program. We've been doing the LNA program for four cohorts, Licensed Nurse Assistant Program. Rutland Regional Medical Center turned their fifth-floor dayroom into our classroom, because it's a no-brainer for them, they're looking for LNA's. So they've got 10 or 12 people per cohort, getting the training up there, doing their clinical out on the floor, where the DON can actually watch really good people delivering hands-on service to patients up at that hospital, and then make them offers right there while they're right inside the hospital. Perfect for them. And probably the last, the last thing where we found kind of a niche, and it came to us through a back door, was last, this past year, we had six kids referred to us from Burn Burton Academy High School, kids who did not avail themselves of career and technical education, CTE, down in their neck of the woods. And they took our evening programs. The kids actually came up while they were still student, students, seniors, pending graduates. And the Stratton Foundation paid for the full cost of those six kids for their tuition in five programs, cosmetology, phlebotomy, CDL, LNA, and welding. And we received $24,000 for those kids at Burn Burton that came up and are in our programs. For whatever reason, they didn't avail themselves of their opportunity down there at Northwest or Southwest. I'm going to get that geography class. They came up and availed themselves, and we've got some kids that are going to, that are going to enroll next semester, who are going to be in the same situation. In January, Andrea Hogan, who's their guidance counselor, identifies kids who basically are going to graduate in six months and have no idea what they want to do with their lives. They're probably not going to go to college. And she counsels them into programs that we're offering that will lead them, fast-track them right into an occupation once they're done, which is pretty awesome, compliments of the Stratton Foundation. I'm going to stop now, because.
He could go on all night.
Melissa kicked me. That hurt.
I think it's absolutely amazing. I can't sit here and not, just bursting out like, oh, my God, just great, great comments and great work, and it makes amazing.
We do some, we do some pretty good stuff, because you guys support what we do in your budget every year, so it's.
Awesome.
You guys.
I want to add one more thing. I think that you two are a lot of fun, and that actually makes a difference. You're very animated about your jobs, and you're always like.
Don't get his ego up there.
But you're very animated, and you anticipate things, and you seem to enjoy it. And you guys, every time you do speak, you do have an energy, and I'm like, I want to go back to school. So, and for me to say that, I really don't want to, but.
You do sound like a lot of fun. Peter was next.
Thank you. You can go back to school. You absolutely can. I was going to actually talk a lot about what you had just said in commentary style. So I'm just going to wrap it up again by reiterating what you started when you went down here. Working with employers to help them build their workforce is what you now do. Back when I was on the board before, it was kind of the other way around. You set out programs, and hopefully, kids came, and then they hopefully went out and found a job. But I remember in 2011, '12 timeframe, when Casella approached us and asked if we could stand up a program quickly to train, and I believe at the time, it was diesel mechanics. And within two months, we had the program stood up, and it met all the regulatory requirements so that they could get their appropriate certifications. That's what we have to do, and that is what you're doing. And certainly, for, you know, for employers that are out there wondering, I don't know where the heck I'm going to get my, you know, my workers from, call you. And see, and see what can be developed. Because it's not just about filling this school up here, because it probably is full. It can be done off-site, and you provide the regulatory requirements such that certifications can be met. Thank you.
I'm going to go off of what Peter said again. It's good to be next to me. I just, I didn't realize all this adult learning was happening here at Stafford. And I just, I'm very aware of the, we've been talking about, everybody has staffing problems, everybody needs people, and this is just like, like Charlene was saying, I'm just bursting, like, this is exactly what we need here. Like you're saying, the plowing in West Rutland and the nurses and the, it's just awesome that there's so much potential in this, and it's cool that you saw the beginning of it, and you're seeing the. And this is what, this is so current to what everybody needs right now, and it's so exciting to see this happening right in Rutland. And this correlates directly to, you know, municipal problems and general problems, and people getting back into the working force and being able to make money, being able to survive, and the inflation going up and everything. So it's just really cool to see all this happening right here in our school system. I just love it.
I just have to say, working with some of your, mostly LNA's, because I work at the hospital, I'm very impressed at how prepared and how professional the people at your graduate program are. So props to you. It's awesome.
Amy Martone was the one, she served on our board, and Amy said, can you, how would you like to move your LNA program up to the hospital? What's? Okay. Like, it doesn't get any better than that. It's forward-thinking people, partners in our community, if we didn't have them coming like John Casella and Amy Martone, and now Sammy Baird, who's going to be working, having once with her in our community health. I mean, they're always looking for ways to, they've become very, very nimble at looking for good people in their own organization and com- incumbent workers and, and promoting them up. Almost all the people that I mentioned are like, you know, you're working in dietary, you're really good with people. How would you like to get your LNA license and step it up? And, and those are people in the organizations, like, we can't afford to lose incumbent workers. What can we do to entice them to stay? And, and so they're, and they're paying, the employers are paying rack rate basically for our classes to keep them. So they, they don't have any loan debt. They're, they're doing all the right things. Employers are doing all the right things and we couldn't do it without, without their support. So thanks to the hospital.
I just had two, two quick things. One, I feel like this helps us keep, keep the honors.
Yeah.
Right? Like I think we help us keep some very young people here and help with our demographic challenges, right? So from a really broad perspective. But also you mentioned working with Andrea Hogan, who IDs kids who otherwise might be lost.
Yeah.
To me, that was huge. I'm like, these kids would just, who knows what they'd be doing, you know? That's, I think that's kudos to the partnerships and, and her and obviously the other people that are doing hard for those kids, right? So, yeah.
It's her partnership with, with the Stratton Foundation. They're like, what can we do with this money? And Andrea's like, well, I, I can find something to do with that money. I know somebody in Rutland will take your money in a second. And, and it's, and it's good. I mean, the kids are really, really, they're really engaged for the first time. They've sort of found like, I'm sure they're thinking. I mean, my daughter's a senior at Rutland High School right now. We're looking at colleges. It never occurred to her to be a plumber or an electrician, even though I tried to push her in that direction. But, but the good thing about it is when, when you've got a bunch of kids like Andrea has identified that really don't know what they're, they want to do and says, we've, we've got the funding and, and the opportunity for you if you're willing to put, you commit yourself to it. And these kids, these, these six kids have been rock stars in all of those programs. They're really good.
Highlighted on getting to some of those kids younger, letting them know some of the options and what's out there is, is great as well.
I'll just note on December 8th, we're hosting our, we're bringing back our legislative luncheons post-COVID. And so we just had confirmed today Secretary French is going to be attending and pending the election, Governor Scott. So we're just waiting for the election results for that. So that'll be exciting. We'll be bringing alumni back, telling kind of how, from both the day and the evening program, to talk about, you know, the impact Stafford had and making that connection between career and workforce. So it should be a good day.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right, next up are committee reports. And first one on the agenda is the policy committee report.
Our policy, Rob, jump in anytime. Basically, the update is starting at 6 o'clock. And that came in, going in for first reading. And so how is that going for everyone?
We made it. We made it.
Works. So that will ride through as long as no one has any objections.
I'm going to pay a motion for the first reading of policy 15 to 20, which is regular board.
I just have a question on that. I thought that when we agreed to it was on a temporary basis, are now.
This is our second meeting.
Right.
Temporary basis, so now we're putting it forward.
As a permanent, okay.
It's first reading, so. First reading, then next month it will be second reading, so it takes us three months to get to the first. Discussion. All those in favor of the first reading?
Aye.
Okay. Any other updates in the committee?
No.
All right. Great. Next up is the building committee report. And I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Okay, building committee met on October 4th, a week ago. We talked about the vans that we had proposed buying that we're waiting to have, to have ordered and manufactured for us and it'll be a while. There's also, we talked about ordering wood pellets, which one of the places, Vermont Renewable Fuels, their bid for this year was only a dollar more than last year, so we're going to run with that. That's a great opportunity. We also talked about outdoor classrooms for a number of different locations and different designs for northeast, northwest, Pier Point. See how much of this can I do from memory and how much do I have to check my notes? Sorry. Northeast Rutland Middle School, northwest at Pier Point and Allen Street. And there are slightly different designs for several of the different places based on the needs of that particular program. Some of them will have a, a roof with seating like, there's a, anyway, it's a pavilion design. Right. And there's others that, that will be a, a pad with a removable sunshade. So lots of different opportunities out there. Also talked about asbestos removal in flooring. I vaguely remember what we were talking about here. There's little pockets here and there in different buildings around the district and I don't remember the timeline. Greg? Glenn?
But basically it's flooring throughout some of our spaces. And as I said, the RFP will probably become, come before the board next month.
Okay. All right. And then we're looking at the, the timeline for our green schools initiative. This is setting up places to deal with the runoff from the, the programs called the three-acre.
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. This has been an ongoing process and it's, it's, we're on schedule essentially, right? And that was the main stuff. Is there anything else?
No, it's just the, the stormwater mandate is happening at northeast because it's three acres of non-permeable surface. So it's northeast, the middle school, intermediate school combined, and then Stafford High School combined. And we're just in the design, the final design phases of that. Hopefully we'll have a final design to bring before the board, maybe by December, hopefully.
Thank you. DEC was going to be paying for some of this, not the remediation, but the, the design or the evaluation of, of our properties.
Of the stormwater permit? Yes, correct. The, the initial.
And it's Department of Environmental Conservation for the state.
Correct, yep. And so there's basically the design and then the, the preliminary assessment and then final design is paid for. We don't have any word yet on construction.
How to, how to sign them a bill?
Exactly. But we have, but we do have, once, once that final design is in place, we have five years to construct. So there's a little bit of leeway there and hopefully funds might become available.
Funds are already set aside. I'm sure that they will figure out a way to get them to the, the requesting organizations. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up then is finance and strategic planning. So I will turn it over to Mary Beth.
Thanks, Allison. I think that a lot of what we covered has been covered tonight, including the budget timeline and the portrait of a graduate update. Those were two of the, two of the three main topics. The third topic we covered was related to the annual audit. Ted, would you like to give an update on that? Thank you.
So as Mary Beth mentioned, the, the, the third topic at the committee's meeting last Tuesday was about the selection of a new public auditor to replace O'Brien Shortle. As many of you probably know, O'Brien Shortle had been auditing the district's financial statements for more than 20 years. They elected to not renew the engagement for a variety of business reasons, I guess. It was not related to any issues regarding controls or regularities. And to that point, I would mention that their last, their most recent audit opinion was unqualified, meaning that although they had some findings, none were sufficiently material to cause them any concern. Of course, then, when you go shopping for a new auditor, everybody wants to know why. So, you know, we produced, we, we produced a representation letters and such to indicate that it was just a matter of us no longer fitting within their business model. They'd gone through an acquisition and they're focusing on different markets now. So we were initially a little disappointed because they've served us well and they know us well. But, but life goes on and we're actually very thrilled. We followed a recommendation. We looked at several firms with standard criteria in mind, like reputation, depth of team, responsiveness, effectiveness in providing audit and controls guidance, use of standard billing protocols. I mean, the common factors that you would expect us to consider. But we followed a lead that Mary Markowski, the city treasurer, gave us. The city has been using Sullivan Powers and Company since fiscal 2017. They've been very satisfied with the results. So when we contacted Sullivan Powers and had conversations with a couple of their folks, we were also very impressed and glad to say that Sullivan and Powers have agreed to, to take on the role of, the role of our auditor, at least for the next two sets of fiscal statements. So that, that's great news. They're going to be coming in probably in November or December timeframe to begin audit field work. One change that's occurring this year versus the last couple of years is that because of COVID, the normal filing deadline for fiscal statements is, the fiscal statements that are completed for a year ending June 30th typically must be filed in a federal clearinghouse by the following March 31st. So you basically have nine months to complete the statements, get them audited, certified, and then you submit it. Because of COVID, the government decided that they would extend that deadline by six months to September 30th for the last several years. And, and that's what we have been following. We're in the process of, of putting together the fiscal statements for fiscal 21, which we will have in shortly. It's slightly late, but we have notified AOE of the reasons why. And we spoke with Sullivan Powers and, you know, discussed what had happened, which was basically cascading effects due to COVID. But now that COVID has essentially passed in terms of its impact, the government decided we're going to go back to a regular schedule. So the fiscal statements for 22, the year just completed, those will be due March 31st of 23. And as part of our planning with Sullivan Powers, we have worked out to get on their audit calendar so that they'll start in December, the 22 statements, and we're going to file early. And that's going to be our plan going forward. So we're, we're thrilled with that and we hope that it's going to be the beginning of a very mutually beneficial relationship for at least a few years to come. The other two, oh, and, and in terms of, I think you had mentioned, Peter, briefly, you were wondering about material findings?
Yes, I, it was.
Yes.
If I may, I, I'd asked pre-meeting that I was going to.
Yeah, and thank you for the heads up on that. I appreciate that.
I just, it was something that I always used to track. I would read the audit report. I, I read most of the, I, I read most of the, the material that Sullivan sent to us, skimmed the rest of it. But one of the things I would always look for is material weaknesses.
Right.
For obvious reasons. And so I asked you going back five years, have we had it? Because I haven't been.
Yeah, so what I would say to you is I'm going to answer you in two ways. The first is I'm going to say that we have not had any material weaknesses in the sense that a material weakness will cause an auditor to qualify the opinion. So if you use that as a criterion, since the reports are unqualified, the opinions, we've had no material weaknesses. However, I would also say that there have been a couple of findings that are significant.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to play games with words, but one of the significant findings which occurred in the last couple of reports from O'Brien Shortle and specifically Jim Reynolds, the partner in charge, he was concerned about the level and the depth of staffing in our business office. Because if you go back a few years ago, we had a situation where we had an assistant accounting manager and an accounting manager. Our current accounting manager had been the assistant manager for a number of years. When the accounting manager retired, she moved into that role. The assistant position was not replaced. So when I came here in the middle of 2020, I was aware of that finding. I thought before I start to change anything or recruit extra people, let's see if we can reorganize, prioritize and determine. We are going to be including in the current budget recruiting for a position of an assistant accounting manager. Because we've come to the conclusion that even trying to high-grade activities, eliminate low-priority activities, we need, we need the help. And I'm going to mention one of the comments that supports that. We were going slow on that because recognizing that there are budget constraints and we have been trying to keep the full-time employees to the minimum necessary to meet our standards, we don't want to go hiring any more than we need to. But we've got enough evidence now to suggest that we should go ahead. Because another significant finding, the second and the last, that I would mention to you, which was flagged in the COVID and post-COVID reports, was that our accounting team got behind on some of the usual monthly account reconciliations. Not to the point where it caused a material weakness, but as Jim Reynolds was saying, you don't, you want to make this process get better before it gets worse. So we focused on that and I can say the last time I checked, which was a month ago, we were current. So we did eventually get caught up. But we do need to bring in some additional depth because the, the business office, like the staff in general, you know, has a certain demographic. And these are positions that you don't fill overnight. And, and we want to transition and create some bench depth. So that someday if our accounting manager decides that she wants to retire and if we let her, then we'll have a replacement. So those are, those are the two main findings. And when we get together at some point, I can go into some more details for you.
I appreciate that. So on the, on the significant findings, there's only been a, it sounds like we've had a couple of years where we've had the same significant finding, but no track record of multiple years because I'm thinking of other audits at state level where I've seen just year after, year after, same thing.
Right, right. And, and, and like when they, when Jim Reynolds talked about the staffing issue, you know, I was really very clear with him to say, I hear you. I know you've made this recommendation for a few years, but we sort of want to take a wait-and-see approach to make sure that we should really do that. And he, and he understood, so he understood we weren't ignoring it. We were kind of considering it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you for the question. So that's, we've really covered the portrait of a graduate, as you said, very well, and the, the budget update. So unless anybody else has a question or a comment, that's all I would have.
So we've just signed, we've signed and submitted the engagement letter at this point?
I, we have not signed the engagement letter. We are going to now that the, we wanted to wait. We included it as a consent agenda item based on the approval of the committee. But we wanted to wait for the formal board approval before we actually signed the letter. So that's the first thing I'm going to do tomorrow morning.
Gotcha. I had one question.
Yes, please.
As you talked about adding to the business office, is there any opportunity for ESER funds? Or is there anything carved out for the handling of all this money?
Yes.
And the impacts that it has had on business office?
Yes, you're, you're, you're exactly right on both counts. And thank you for asking that question. So one of the, one of the factors that, you know, has become more significant in the last couple of years is with all of the ESER activity, the transactions, the project-related activities that we have, that has increased our workload. And so we are working on the justification to say, in order to meet that increased ESER-related workload, we can hopefully use ESER funds to staff that position initially of an assistant accounting manager with a focal point on the recovery activities. That would be good for a year or two. And then following that, once the ESER activity winds down and the funding, then we make the decision, okay, do we continue to fund this with local funds? Or do we do something different? Or do we eliminate a position so we're net even? So yes, for the first year or two, it looks like we'll be able to fund it through ESER. Thanks for asking about that.
All right.
Thank you so much. You guys have a great evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. So next up is unfinished business. And we have no unfinished business to come before the board.
We talked about the evaluation.
Oh, I missed you. I, I put a check mark there.
Oh, sorry. Because I went.
Mary Beth round two, super talented bow.
I'm like, wait, I think I have more. Very exciting. Anyway, first, first thing I wanted to do was I think certainly thank Patricia and Betty and, and also Sheri and Rob for their assistance in really getting this evaluative process into an electronic.
and also Sherry and Rob for their assistance in really getting this value to process into an electronic form. You know, so it's, thank you so much. It definitely took time for everybody involved to make that happen for us, to be able to do it on our computers and not handwrite it. Anyway, so thanks so much for that, Patricia. And then, so the electronic survey is out. You all should have received an email last Wednesday on the 5th. And I think that came from Patricia. Is that, no, it came from Sherry.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it came from Sherry. And please, so everybody here, you know, school commissioners here at the table and the like in the audience, don't make us hunt you down. Let's get 100% participation, get some good data. I'm a numbers person. Get us some good data. And we'll move from here, I think, right? So it's due the night. Yep, it is. Yeah, it's definitely coming. It's due the 19th, next Wednesday. Extra credit. If you get it in before, before like Friday or something, right? So I don't know.
Putting it on my calendar right now.
Okay.
So what do we get?
I don't know. Yeah, I'm all, you know.
It's done.
It's good. Thank you. Good. Right, perfect. Yeah. So we can provide some incentive, I guess. Please, please do it. It'll certainly.
Ice cream works for me. Ice cream works for me.
Okay. Ice cream pizza without french fries.
No, it's ice cream and pizza.
So yeah, so please do, it's due next Wednesday. Please take the time to do it. I know feedback is important to the growing process. Certainly for Bill and for the district, right? So for the kids, it's really important for the process, so. And I think that's it, right? Is there anything else you should say, Kathy? You're right. I forget, I forget anything. Okay, good. I'm done. Now you can check me out.
Now I can. Too late, I already did. I did that on the board.
I'm gonna check me out.
You're so good. You're done. I was like, oh, look at that. I have a check mark next to me. Oops. All right. So unfinished business, we have none before the board. Any new business to come before the board? A none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you, everyone.